Hi, we're going to give people a minute to log on. The Zoom courtesy. And we're going to give people just one more minute before we get started. Okay, I think we will get started. People will continue logging on and of course, we are taping this, so it's something you can watch later. Good evening. My name is Julie Ty, President of the New York Legal Conservation Voters and the New York Legal Conservation Voters Education Fund. This will be posted on our YouTube channel after tonight. Thank you to all the candidates and staff for joining us today. These discussions are designed to educate and enforce campaigns, inform campaigns for city council, borough president, comptroller and mayor on key environmental and public health issues facing our city. We hope to teach you about important environmental issues so that you're informed as you continue to run for office and then while you're in office. For first time candidates, we think of this as just the beginning of a fruitful relationship with you and hope we continue to partner with you on these priority issues. Tonight, we have two panel discussions. One about transportation infrastructure and one about wastewater and green infrastructure. Transportation is the number one contributor to climate change in our state and our nation. That's why clean transportation is one of our top priorities in our policy agenda. Last year, we saw a 25% reduction in pollution simply due to fewer people driving. We also saw the significant impact that this pollution has on public health. A Harvard study found a correlation between neighborhoods with worse air quality and poor COVID health outcomes. If we want to combat these effects, we have to start by combating climate change itself. Fortunately, New York City is already making changes. Through the Open Streets Program and Outdoor Dining, the city is prioritizing streets for pedestrians, cyclists and small businesses instead of cars. But there's more work to do and we look forward to hearing more during tonight's discussion. If you have questions for the panelists, you can use the Q and A function. We will address the questions at the end of each panel. Now we'll start with our first round of panels. I'd like to please welcome Danny Pearlstein and Kate Slevin. Danny Pearlstein is Policy and Communications Director at the Riders Alliance, New York's grassroots organization of bus and subway riders. He worked previously in the New York City Council. Kate Slevin is Senior Vice President of State Programs and Advocacy at the Regional Plan Association and serves on the organization's leadership team. She oversees RPA's programs in New York, New Jersey and Connecticut and works to implement policies and projects to advance RPA's missions towards improved mobility, equitable economic growth and environmental resilience. Kate led RPA's advocacy for New York City's congestion pricing program, which all three of us worked on quite a bit, which was authorized by the state legislature in April of 2019. Danny and Kate, over to you.
Thanks so much and it's great to be here. Danny and I are going to do a tag team tonight, so bear with us. And we have a little slide presentation to help you along. So transit is the backbone of our city and a key reason why New Yorkers born into low income households have a greater chance of earning higher incomes as adults when compared to other places. Before the pandemic, over 7.5 million trips were being made each day across just our subway and bus lines. This doesn't even account for Port Authority or NJ Transit or some of the other regional operators. While a current health crisis may have us questioning things like how much office space we need in a city so dependent on transit, there's no question that everyone deserves access to a system that is safe, reliable and affordable. More and more New Yorkers are being priced out from their neighborhoods with good access to jobs, transit and other amenities due to the growing housing crisis. This has largely fallen on low income households of color and has led to overcrowding in communities with less access to opportunity and communities that have seen some of the worst impacts from the pandemic. And where many of the essential workers we've relied on, especially over the past year, have had to deal with the growing burden of long unreliable commutes. There's no New York City without appealing transit and there's no equitable recovery unless we tackle the gaps in connectivity that make up for disinvestment of the past decades. Improving transit is a major challenge requiring collaboration with federal, state and city leaders. But today Danny and I will discuss some of the things that city leaders can do and you can do and or your people you're working for can do if elected and some things you can lean on. And I'll just say RPA is a 501(c)(3) organization. We do not endorse, but we are happy to serve as a resource for you over the next year. Next slide, please. Most of the major structural challenges facing our transit system are already known. We have a robust capital program to repair and modernize New York City Transit, the LIR and Metro North. And similar plans exist for the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey. And when we talk about capital work, we're talking about the hard infrastructure projects, track work, subway work that will fundamentally improve how our transit system operates. We also have the Streets Master Plan Law, which many of us worked on, which requires 30 miles of new dedicated bus lanes and 50 miles of protected bike lanes every year to improve safety, accessibility and reliability on city streets. There's a lot of energy and momentum behind each of these plans prior to the pandemic. But now financial deficits mean these plans are in jeopardy. We need incoming city leaders to really, really, really be kindle the momentum for our transit system and be an advocate for riders, cyclists and pedestrians. Danny, do you want to add some about the riders' concerns here?
Sure. You know, what I'll say is that at the moment, there are still 3 million New Yorkers taking transit in New York every day. So we may be down from 9 million, but transit riders are literally carrying the city through the worst of the pandemic and transit is still a lifeline for millions of people. The majority of New Yorkers, of course, don't have cars. And so transit is as important to the city now as ever, and it's crucial to our recovery. And it should be a big part of city policymaking, even though the MTA is run by the governor.
Great. Next slide. So we're really lucky here in New York to have just an incredible, robust, intelligent and passionate group of advocates working on transportation issues. And so with our partners, including LCV, Strap Hangers, Transportation Alternatives, came up with a priority agenda list for all of the candidates for citywide office. And we'll hope you'll take advantage of our collective passion for improving our city and region. And you can read the full agenda on our website and Danny's going to just give you a quick overview of what this entails.
Next slide. So we put together this agenda for city leaders back at the end of the year. And it was, you know, of course, after, you know, a totally unprecedented year where all those groups on the previous slide joined up with our colleagues all around the country on the first ever national campaign for transit justice. But just as we're relying on Congress to keep buses and trains running through the pandemic, we're relying on city leaders to fundamentally transform our relationship with public space to make it safer and fairer for all New Yorkers. That starts here with some funding, which is that congestion pricing will come online soon. We are waiting on federal approval and then state implementation, but the city has a major role to play in making sure that the infrastructure rolls out smoothly. And this city is also, you know, looking, looked at for innovative approaches to transit funding, whether it's value capture or other sources. But probably the biggest way in which the city influences public transit is through its control of the streets that buses run on. We have the slowest bus service in the nation, but the most bus riders. Two and a half million New Yorkers rode the bus every day before the pandemic and even now it's over a million. Close to half of bus riders are essential workers. Overwhelmingly, bus riders have no other way to get around. Bus riders are largely low income New Yorkers of color who for several decades have been left behind on city streets as the city has prioritized private cars, even though, again, it's a minority of New Yorkers who actually drive. And so, you know, to transform our approach to the streets, we need to start with our buses. And that means more bus lanes, more busways and examinations of what's routes could could be scaled up even beyond and carry even more folks to get quickly around the city, including to affordable neighborhoods that are far from the subway. What this will also do is help us address our climate goals. You know, we have a paradox in the city where unlike most of the country, the majority of our carbon emissions come from our buildings. And so we've made tremendous strides, like with Local Law 97, to reduce carbon emissions from buildings. But unfortunately, our transportation emissions have remained flat for the last 15 years. There are simply still too many unnecessary car trips being taken in the city every day. And we know they're unnecessary because the majority of New Yorkers are able to use transit to get around. Even from the furthest from neighborhoods, the majority of New Yorkers commuting into Manhattan, for example, take public transit. So we need to leverage our transit system even more than we have before and we need to rededicate our public space to get more cars off the road. A big piece of that is making transit more affordable for more places. The city has built the Fair Fares Program for hundreds of thousands of people living below the poverty line. But there are also new ways that we can leverage our existing commuter rail infrastructure to bring it within reach of low and middle income people living in neighborhoods in Brooklyn, Queens and the Bronx. And so a discussion about the Freedom Ticket necessarily includes, you know, people from the city to look at how we leverage the MTA's commuter rail infrastructure. We also have to recognize that the city is not as easily navigated by some New Yorkers as by others and prioritize accessibility, whether that's working with the MTA to make sure that subway accessibility is accelerated. Right now, the subway is overwhelmingly inaccessible and we need to stride toward that. Or whether it's figuring out new ways of snow removal so that bus stops are actually accessible, the way the bus system, which is officially fully accessible, is actually not, you know, on a week like this one. We have to expand opportunities for micro mobility, starting with bicycling and extending onto e-bikes and scooters and recognize that there are, you know, many good ways for New Yorkers to get around that have a much greater efficiency and affordability and a smaller carbon footprint than driving. And, you know, Kate will talk more about that later on. RPA has done tremendous work on that subject. And, you know, overwhelmingly what that requires is making streets safer for all street users. You know, increasingly, New Yorkers who drive are driving around in giant pickups and SUVs, which pose tremendous danger to other people on the street. The majority of New Yorkers who don't have cars, who don't drive. And so we need to continue to re-engineer our streets for safety, which at the same time re-engineers them for equity, because it's the low income New Yorkers overwhelmingly have no access to cars. And finally, you know, when we're looking at the reallocation of street space, some of that is pretty granular, like looking at what we do with the parking lanes, looking at how we can green our streets, make our streets safer and introduce, you know, more transit access, more transit priority onto our streets as we, you know, build on the real successes of the last couple of administrations. But, you know, dramatically scale up what we've been doing these last 20 years or so. Next slide.
Great. So we're going to go on to show a little bit more detail about a couple of these points. We want to underscore that we absolutely need more federal aid. And the fact that we're not going to talk about it all that much does not mean it is not paramount of importance right now. But we want to focus on things that city leaders can do themselves. So with that, you can move on to the next slide. So the Partnership for New York City has estimated that traffic congestion costs the metro area $20 billion a year. And as we look towards recovery, we can't afford to take on these costs right now. It's critical that we implement the $51 billion MTA capital program to improve safety and reliability of the transit system. And everyone on transit needs less traffic for drivers. It's an interconnected system. It is not, you know, cars versus or drivers versus people, pedestrians versus drivers. It's all integrated and it all works together. Successful implementation of congestion pricing, which was authorized by the state legislature in 2019, is still the cornerstone of getting all that necessary capital work done. An unfriendly federal administration delayed it, but now we're hearing very positive things from the Biden administration. And it could come on, you know, be implemented as soon as early 2021. That depends on what we hear about the EIS. The program will need to generate about $1.5 billion and that's enough to bond for $15 billion to fund the MTA capital program. We've written a detailed report that highlights the importance of things like split tolling, variable fees and other specifics designed to make the most effective program at reducing congestion and reaching the revenue targets. In addition to effective collaboration between New York City DOT and the MTA to install the infrastructure and enforce the program, successful implementation of congestion pricing will require city leadership to proactively improve options such as bus service and bicycle infrastructure, especially for communities that do not have reliable access to public transit already. It may be more reliant on private vehicles to get around. Fully funding the MTA's five-year capital investment is a critical recovery strategy. The capital program could generate more than $75 billion in statewide economic activity and create nearly 350,000 full-time employees throughout the state. That's over 6,000 jobs for every $1 billion spent on the capital program. Next slide, please.
While the governor controls the MTA and appoints a majority of board members and the top staff that run the system day to day, there are great opportunities for city leaders to influence how well our public transit system works for all New Yorkers. First off, the city gets four representatives on the MTA board, which come on the recommendation of the mayor and then the nomination of the governor to the state senate. But even more than that, the, the role of city elected officials should not be to shrink from the transit system when it's having trouble, but to ride transit and to meet New Yorkers where they are, which is overwhelmingly on subways and buses. And by bringing attention to public transit in that way, talking about it, experiencing it, using it for what it is, but also as a place to meet constituents, you know, that helps focus the necessary attention of the press and other actors on the needs of the transit system, right? It's unlikely that legislators who work in Albany, for example, or the governor himself will use the transit system. But for folks who commute to City Hall, the transit system is, you know, obviously tremendously efficient and helpful, but it's also, you know, something where we have a unique opportunity, I think, to amplify and elevate the needs of riders. And there's this bully pulpit that the city's members on the MTA board have by being independent of the governor, but also that city elected officials themselves have in showing up in transit for and with New Yorkers. And then there's as well the real tangible, you know, items of funding Fair Fares. The city now has about a 50% share of the accessory ride budget as well and various obligations to the capital budget too. So there is ways in which the city budget is intertwined with the MTA, so that that's largely as a result of state law. But it's more this bully pulpit and this not shrinking from, but really embracing the transit system that's at the center of the city in promoting, you know, what riders need in terms of fast, frequent and reliable service. Next slide.
So despite this scale of our transit system, over 30 of New Yorkers live in what we call subway deserts. And as you can see on this map, it shows some of them. Riders that have disabilities often have less access since not all stations are ADA compliant. So modernizing the subway system will improve travel times and reliability for those who need to travel into and out into and within Manhattan. However, prior to the pandemic, we are seeing greater job growth in the outer boroughs. Commute times were increasing, adding, increasing and adding more burden to households already jailing with the stress of the housing costs and displacement, which I mentioned before. So we'll talk in a minute about the need to improve bus service so more people have more reliable service. Next slide, please. And of course, one of the best ways to expand and improve bus service is to repurpose streets, as Danny mentioned. With more say on city streets and important role in bus redesign discussions, there are clear examples for how city leadership can work to improve surface transit. For years, advocates pushed for the 14th Street busway as a response to the proposed L train shutdown and as a way to pilot what such a transit way could look like and mean for riders in heavily traveled corridors. The numbers speak for themselves and you see some of them here. Increased ridership speeds and reliability. So if we're going to see real benefits, we need leadership that will follow the mandates in the Street Master Plan and work quickly to address community needs and build off of the success that we've seen. And this type of busway is not just a Manhattan thing. It's important to identify quarters throughout the city with high ridership that will benefit from similar treatments as Danny will discuss right now.
Next slide. So, you know, busways aren't just something flashy for Manhattan. This is Edward L. Grant Highway in the West Bronx in the High Bridge section of the Bronx, linking the South and West Bronx to Washington Heights and the thousands of jobs in New York Presbyterian and Columbia Medical Center. This is a road that was very high, very wide, was very dangerous and it was chaotic. And this year DOT, you know, took all of its tools and toolbox and took it out and created dedicated center running bus lanes with at level boarding for people in wheelchairs and with strollers and suitcases, created protected bike lanes and really transformed the street into a tremendous community asset and a really much safer and much more equitable use of the public space that at bottom gets more people to work more efficiently and more affordably. And this is something that can roll out all across the city. There should be a model for neighborhoods, you know, in every borough. And, you know, we look at, you know, wide streets with excess capacity like Northern Boulevard, places like Fordham Road, which is the most heavily used bus route in the city because the Bronx has no East-West subway, but could be upgraded into a busway. There are still lots of low hanging fruit for improving bus service and bus priority on streets. And it's now the law, as Kate mentioned, the Streets Master Plan Law requires, beginning next year, that the DOT creates 30 miles of bus lanes each year and they can be very innovative, very high quality bus lanes, like the one we're seeing on E.L. Grant Highway. And it's, you know, relatively cheap to do. I mean, this is something they were able to accomplish at the height of the pandemic with tremendous budget uncertainty. Bus lanes have great bang for their buck. There's very little budget impact. If their political will exists to transform public space in this visible and equitable way, it can be done easily, quickly, time and time again. Next slide. So, you know, the E.L. Grant Highway didn't happen by itself and neither did 14th Street. 14th Street grew out of the campaign around the planned L train shutdown that didn't actually happen. But places like E.L. Grant came out of the bus turnaround campaign, which for the last five years has been demanding a suite of bus service improvements from both the DOT that controls the streets and the MTA that controls the buses themselves. And we are in our latest approach to City Hall have asked that the mayor complete 30 more bus miles of bus lanes before he leaves office. Last year DOT completed 15 miles in just a small space between July and November. So starting in March or April, when the streets are warm enough to paint, we know that they'll have no trouble doing 30 miles. And so we're just asking that the resources be allocated. And, you know, the value of a bus lane is tremendous, as Kate showed on the 14th Street slide. You know, that was immediately, you know, big double digit bumps in ridership and bus speeds. Ultimately, they were both up by a third, you know, within a couple of months, you know, before ridership was down, but speeds were up even higher owing to the pandemic in April and May of last year. But, you know, now is the time to go bigger. The law requires it next year, but we can do it this year and get DOT off to a strong start of the next administration with more bus lane installation, quicker rollout of bus lane enforcement cameras, which have been authorized by the legislature and, you know, a real pattern, a playbook, which is what the master plan is supposed to be for prioritizing busy bus routes in crowded neighborhoods for bus priority on more and more streets across all five boroughs. Next slide.
Looking to the future when we might have more money available to complete more ambitious projects, we want to make sure that the money is going to communities that have been hurt the most by the pandemic and the economic challenges we've been facing. And that means we need to start planning now for these investments. So one of our favorite proposals is introducing passenger service along what we call the tri-borough line. This is a 24-mile freight rail line that already exists and runs from Co-op City in the Bronx through Queens and ends in Bay Ridge. Since the tracks and other infrastructure are already there, it would make a smaller price tag to complete this project. And then other big projects like the Gateway Tunnel between New York and New Jersey, Port Authority Bus Terminal, will improve access to a wider range of jobs and more employees for New York City businesses. Next slide, please. So this reverse pyramid represents a system that prioritizes people over cars on city streets. We've seen some examples of repurposing streets for more sustainable modes of transportation and to improve safety. And we've also seen during the pandemic, how we can look to new uses of our streets like the open streets, open dining to encourage more connections between neighborhoods. Next slide, please. Essentially, the city has deployed a large-scale pilot program over the past year, showing the impact of reprioritizing our streets and what they can be used for. Closing down streets has helped communities have local access to open space. The Open Restaurants Program has allowed businesses to make use of sidewalks and parking spaces for outdoor dining and has helped save thousands of jobs. There's a lot of opportunity if we look beyond our current crisis and work to make sure efforts like this are attractive and safe and they continue and are part of a longer term strategy. We've also seen a surge in biking, but safety and accessibility are the most important challenges to get more people to use it and see it as a viable transit system. Last summer, we released our plan for a five borough bikeway, which implemented would add over 400 miles of safe, continuous, high-capacity bike lanes connecting all of our boroughs and serving as a spine for a more local bike network over the coming decades. And they can't come soon enough now that e-bikes are authorized and legal and we have a scooter share program coming to the outer boroughs. So city leadership should put together a task force with community leaders and bike advocates to help develop a broad vision for biking while also work, working to implement temporary measures and speed up the construction process so the plan is ready to roll out quickly. All of these really point to a hard but necessary task for new city leaders. Working across sectors with a broad range of stakeholders and the city's strong civic sector to build trust in a vision, not just for transit, but for all the issues we've talked about. For getting around by a healthy, easier, more affordable means and so that we can expand access to opportunity and improve the quality of life for all New Yorkers. Thanks very much.
Thank you, guys. That was terrific. We have next, our panelist is Jenny Vellows. Jenny is a community organizer in the Environmental Justice Program for the New York Lawyers for the Public Interest, affectionately known as NLP, a not-for-profit organization that pursues equality and justice for all New Yorkers by confronting bias and barriers based on race, poverty, disability and immigration status. Raised in the Bronx, Jenny understands the environmental burdens that low income communities and communities of color face on a daily basis. Through her work, Jenny advocates for, on behalf of these communities, making sure that their voices are an integral part of creating a more equitable and sustainable city. Part of that advocacy is prioritizing the health and safety of children as well as communities as a whole through electrification of school buses. Jenny?
Thank you, everyone. I'm very excited to be here. As Julie mentioned, I will be talking about why school bus electrification is so important, especially now with the COVID-19 pandemic. Next slide, please. So our current school, but our New York City's current school bus fleet currently runs on diesel and gasoline. Diesel and gasoline buses obviously emit a ton of noxious pollutants, carbon dioxide, nitrogen oxide, particulate matter. All that worsens air quality, all that's harmful to the children, students riding these school buses, especially students with disabilities. New York City students spend hours a day riding on these school buses, breathing in these harmful fumes. As students, especially with respiratory conditions, are more likely to get sick from being on these buses for long periods of time, which can contribute to absenteeism and possible, impossible hospital visits. Students with disabilities are even severely impacted. Students with disabilities are often on average on school buses four hours a day in the mornings and in the afternoons. And students with disabilities ride on buses that tend to break down more easily than general education students. So especially students with disabilities, they are on these school buses breathing in these toxic fumes and can, which can worsen any condition that they may have, respiratory conditions, asthma or any medical condition that they may be fighting. Next slide, please. So I'm here to talk about why are electric school buses so important? Why do we need electric school buses? First of all, obviously, electric school buses are better for the environment. They're cleaner and they are zero emissions. So no longer, if we are able to transition to electric school buses, no longer will there be tailpipe emissions that are emitting all of these harmful fumes in the air, not only endangering children, but endangering communities and individuals, especially when schools are parked when school buses are parked in front of schools idling. Children aren't the, children aren't the only one breathing in these fumes. Anyone walking by, individuals in the communities can also inhale all of these noxious fumes. can also inhale all of these noxious fumes. Most school, and most school buses are environmental justice communities, which exacerbates the burden that is placed on them. Throughout their, throughout their history, we're talking not only um school bus depots, but peaker plants. We're talking um busy highways. Um, an immense amount of traffic going through these neighborhoods emitting all of these noxious fumes worsening air pollution in those communities. Electric school buses need less diesel traffic in these communities, as I just highlighted, cleaner buses, very fewer zero emissions to enable the individuals, especially living in these communities, to be able to breathe better air. Um, obviously, we know that that is a huge, huge issue, especially in these um community, low income communities, communities of color. Where one example is in the South Bronx, which has one of the highest rates of asthma in New York State. Having school bus depots housed in these areas only exacerbates that problem and that issue. Electric school buses improve air quality, which in turn improves the health of children by reducing the exposure to harmful pollutants. But it's not just students. It's everyone living in those communities, especially senior citizens and people with disabilities who are our most vulnerable individuals and who are most vulnerable communities. Um, they continue to breathe in these hazardous fumes. They continue to breathe in these pollutants, which is just exacerbating medical conditions. Next slide, please. And here's just a map illustrating where these depots are housed. Uh, many of these depots, as I said, are housed in environmental justice communities throughout New York, New York City. Um, the South Bronx, we have North Brooklyn, we have South Brooklyn and Coney Island, we have Queens. As I stated, they continue to feel the burden of having these buses coming in and out of the depots. As they go on to their routes, they continue to bear that burden of inhaling these fumes. These buses continue to idle at, before they begin their routes. Buses are going from communities to communities, from schools to schools, emitting all of these just harmful, unbelievably harmful pollutants. And we are fighting to prevent that from continuously happening. Um, as you can see, the orange and the red are where there are three hundred to five hundred school buses housed in those depots. And if I, I know the slide is really small. But if you look very closely, you can see that a lot of those depots that house over five hundred vehicles are located in sectors of the South Bronx, are located in sectors of Brooklyn, are located in sectors of Queens. So what we need to do and what's very important is we need to make sure that these communities no longer are bearing the brunt of this burden. Next slide, please. And this is a map just to illustrate the inefficiency of the school bus routes. Where there is a school bus company in Coney Island and Brooklyn. However, they service a school in the Bronx, Upper Manhattan and in the Bronx. And as you can see by the route, they are passing through New York City. And imagine these school buses that are stuck in traffic. Imagine if these school buses break down. So that is just the continue continually emitting all of these fumes, all of these harmful pollutants as they're making their ways to the schools and as they're making their way back to the school. And to highlight the point of why are these routes so inefficient? And isn't there a way where a bus company can service a school in the same neighborhood? Um, we can go to the next slide. So as you can see, there is actually a school closer to that bus company and that bus depot. However, as I stated, and as you saw on the previous slide, that school bus, that school bus company and depot services a school miles away from where they're located, which again continues that, um, excuse me. Continues the narrative of these school buses are driving miles and miles on these inefficient routes to go to these schools when they can actually service a school that is in their neighborhood. This is one of the reasons why electrifying the school, the school bus fleet is so important. It cuts across health, it cuts across environment, and it cuts across disability. We are working as NUPI is part of a coalition um with environmental organizations, special education advocates, labor groups that are working and fighting to ensure that our students, our children, who are our future can 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 continue to travel to school in a cleaner environment where they don't have to continuously inhale these noxious fumes, inhale these noxious pollutants. Electric school bus offers them that opportunity to ride safely and cleanly. Um, if, next slide, please. And as we segue from school buses, there is also the issue of accessoride, which again also runs a very inefficient system. And NUPI, along with other partners, have been fighting to ensure that people with disabilities who aren't able to take mass trans, mass transportation can have a more efficient accessoride service, as was mentioned before. Um, obviously, it would be beneficial for individuals to take public transportation. However, there is a part of the population that will never be able to take public transportation that need accessoride. And in order for them to use the accessoride service, obviously, they have to make make their appointments days in advance. Um, many of them wait for hours for their accessoride vehicle. And many times they are on these accessoride vehicles for hours at a time as accessoride is making their routes. There is definitely a correlation between school buses and accessoride where we have vulnerable populations traveling on these systems for hours at a time. And traveling on these systems in a very inefficient way. Um, so we, one of the things that we are hoping to, we are hoping to work on is possibly making accessoride a cleaner transportation system. Working with other organizations, working with community members, working with community partners to ensure that we are all committed to a more responsive system like the On Demand Pilot that accessoride is running. Um, however, that is only right now servicing one percent of the population who use accessoride. But also maybe as a wish list, making accessoride a cleaner and a greener service. Um, we, excuse me. We want, as we're working with the electrification of school buses, we should also work on ensuring that accessoride riders also have a more equitable service. We want to make sure that our most vulnerable populations are safe. We want to make sure that when they are taking these services that they are insured a clean ride. We want to make sure that these services are to the benefit of those who need them the most. Which is why we fight for these services. We talk about climate change and we want to help with um ensuring that we have a greener New York. Is, one, it starts with the electrification of school buses. It starts with transitioning from diesel and from gasoline to an all-electric fleet. One way we're doing that is fighting for this, supporting a pilot program through the DOE. Making sure that these electric school buses run efficiently, making sure that these school buses are maintained in an equitable, in an equitable way. Making sure that we can work out the kinks of us, of an electrified school bus system. We also want to make sure that, you know, the buses are able to be maintained. Um, we want to make, we want to foster equity with electric school buses. We want to make sure that the routes are efficient. We want to make sure that we think about our low income and communities of color that continue to bear the burden where our most vulnerable population lives. We want to make we want to make sure that they are part of the narrative of ensuring a safe transport, the same goals with accessoride. We want to ensure a safe transport system. Um, there was a fight to get accessoride to, for accessoride to be able to use the bus lanes, and we do appreciate that. But the fight isn't over. We want to continue to make sure that these systems are serviced in the most efficient way possible. When it comes to school buses, it means electrifying the fleet. When it comes to accessoride, it means a more efficient service. We want to make sure that our most vulnerable populations are being cared for and are being taken care of. Um, and I thank you for just being interested in this issue and wanting to fight this issue with us. We aren't gonna stop until we make sure that people with disabilities, students with disabilities, our most vulnerable populations are being taken care of in New York City. We want to, if we want to electrify our vehicles by 2050, we need to start with vehicles that transport our most vulnerable population. Thank you.
Well, we want to get all those school buses to be zero emission by 2040.
Twenty thirty. Yeah, the sooner, the sooner the better.
Exactly. All right. So thank you to our panel. Um, while we're, people are sending in questions, we do have a short poll. Um, so if we want to put the poll up right now, it's, we are interested in knowing um, you know, who you are and if your constituents or what, what issues your constituents in your district care about tonight. Um, so it'll take just a quick minute. It's only two quick questions. Um, and then actually our panelists can come back um, video and we will um ask some of the questions that we have. We'll give folks just one minute to do this poll. Um, so we have a couple of questions. Um, and I, one of them, I don't, I'm not sure who is best equipped to talk about this as is anyone familiar enough to speak about the Eastern Queens Greenway?
I mean, that's, that's the, the proposal to connect the, the city parks in Eastern Queens with safer pedestrian access. Um, I mean, I think it's exciting. It seems like something that has a lot of support. Um, it's always good to see interagency cooperation and civic engagement that leads to changes. So I think it's a great model for other places in the city. The RP is that we've not officially, you know, said anything about it, but um, but it's, it seems like a pretty exciting proposal that's moving forward.
I think the Trust for Public Land is spearheading this one, if I'm thinking of the right one. Um, so we, we have expressed support for that project. Um, we want to make sure that there's many opportunities as possible for um, for safe ways for people to get around on non-car spaces. Um, so certainly this is an opportunity to do just that. Um, uh, there's a question about car ownership in New York City. Um, I apologize. Of course, my heat just came on. Um, the question is, uh, when we're looking at the car tallies, do we include only New York State DMV registrations or when we're thinking about the number of cars that are in New York City? Are we also considering the number of out of state um vehicles? I know when we're, Danny, you want to take this one?
Sure. Um, it's both. Um, we have numbers on car registrations in the city. And of course, that doesn't represent every car that's in the city. But there's also census data about which households have cars and who in what households has access to a car. And you know, from the first set of data, we know that car ownership rose during the pandemic. There, there's a car boom as well as a bike boom and a decline in transit ridership. Um, but at the same time, we know that it's still a majority of New Yorkers lack access to cars, and that's what makes us such a transit dependent city.
Great. And of course, we are all working collectively, as you talked about in your presentation, to make sure that, that um transit and other mobility options are available to people so that they don't need the car. Um, um, for Jenny. Do you know, would the city council be able to pass legislation restricting the Department of Education's ability to award a bus contract to a vendor that's far away when there's a depot within a few miles of a school?
That's a good question and one I do not have an answer to. What we do know is that there is legislation now in the city council. There is a bill, Intro 455, that will electrify the school bus fleet by 2040. However, that bill has stalled. And even though it has over thirty city council sponsors. Um, that is, that's obviously a really good idea because as you saw on the maps, if there's a, um, if there's a school bus company within a couple of miles from the schools, they should be the ones to be able to service that school and service that route. Um, one of the things that we are obviously watching for is the inefficiency of the bus routes. And one of the things that we do want to work on is when this pilot program is implemented, ensuring that the bus routes are more efficient.
As a follow-up to that, are there any electric school buses currently running in New York City?
They are not. Um, the DOE is in the process of organizing, implementing a school bus pilot program. Um, so we are waiting and hoping for that to be, for that to begin. And we are hoping that as a success is the first step in the implementation or in the transition of an electric, electric school bus fleet.
Okay, school buses are very popular right now and they're um, what kind of infrastructure upgrades will be needed to support the electrification of, of school buses? But I think this, we can also answer this question with respect to transit buses because they have many of the same challenges, although slightly different economics. I mean, the question is about recharging. Um, and then there's just another question about where buses are manufactured, if we know that, and how we might be able to um, leverage our, our climate needs with our opportunities for, for jobs and worker protections.
Um, well, obviously, the, the New York City Clean School Buses Coalition takes all of that into account. We do take into account that um, the infrastructure needs to be there in order for these electric school buses to run efficiently. Right now, the infrastructure is not there and that is part of Intro 455. Not only do we transition, but we also make sure that the infrastructure is in place so that these school buses can run efficiently. Um, but we also understand the need for good green jobs. And that is something else that we prioritize. When we or once the transition to electric school bus happens, we want to make sure that good clean jobs are implemented because these school buses will, again, still need to be maintained. And it will be a kind of a, a new form of maintenance for these school buses, which will require new job training. Um, but we are well aware that this is also a good opportunity for employment, for good green jobs.
Dan or Kate, you want to talk about this on the, on the MTA transit side? At all? Like the MTA's commitment to electric buses?
So the MTA Capital Program, which is currently on hold um, because of COVID, uh, was, so twelve buses to five hundred buses, um, which is a big strike forward. Um, but we are, there's a lot of question about when and how that will happen. Um, but there's a lot of movement around that all around the country to electrify public bus fleets and figure out how to make everything happen so that, that that can actually move forward. And I think that, you know, that may be something in particular, the Biden administration is interested in helping with and expediting, even as we've had to delay procurement here.
And I'll just add to that, beyond just the five hundred buses committed to in the current capital plan, they've also committed to a hundred percent electric buses by 2040. Although I suspect they have the same problems on capital if we don't get them more money, um, which we have all been working on. We've spent a lot of time talking about the MTA and Gateway and congestion pricing. Um, uh, question, if we make more bike lanes, how can delivery trucks park to help small businesses? Someone want to, Kate or Danny, you want to talk about that?
Sure. Um, I would refer you to NACTO, the National Association of City Transportation Officials, has some great images about how work. Um, and has some great images about how to work and explain that pretty thoroughly visually, which I think is really helpful. But essentially, I can describe it, one option, there's a lot of options. But if you have the bike lane on the inside, next to the sidewalk, then there's a zone for delivery, drop-offs and pickups on the other side of the bike lane. And you see, you already see that on some streets in the city. There's other ways to do it, but that's just one example of how it could work.
Well, I think one of the other things, Danny, do you want to go?
Oh, sure. I mean, one other way to look at that is that what the city has done lately with busways, if they, they call them a transit and truck priority route. So they don't move trucks off the route, they just move private cars off the route. And what happens there is that bicycling goes through the roof. Because you'd think with these giant vehicles, you know, it, how could it be safer cyclists? But actually, cyclists have observed that buses and trucks with professional drivers are actually overwhelmingly safe to ride with, and the problem is double parked cars, where people have to weave in and out, and that's what's so terrifying. And the problem is turns also, you know, which as, as relates to trucks. And so a busway, you know, that what the city officially calls Transit Truck Priority could actually very well be called Transit Truck Bike Priority. You know, when the truck wants to deliver, it pulls all of the street.
Yeah, and I'll also add that the, you know, there's more and more deliveries being made by cargo bike. I think as the technology for e-bikes and the affordability of e-bikes expands, you're going to see more and more of that happening just because you have so much more access if you have a little bit of an assistance with an e-bike. So, so I think there's a lot of potential there. And I know a lot of the big companies are already looking into how that can be part of their own commitments to reduce their, their environmental footprint.
I was, that's where I was going with all of this. There was actually a pilot in, in Midtown to juice us that now there's a little technical flaw with the state law, but it is, it is an exciting opportunity for particularly the common carriers. So there is a question about the environmental impact of battery disposal in construction. I don't know if anybody wants to take, take that on, or I can answer a little bit. So most of the batteries, hey, the battery technology is rapidly evolving, and they are lasting longer and longer. They are using, you know, some materials that are very recyclable, but certainly require, you know, other, other, you know, mining of, of rare resources. And that is something that will continue to evolve. I suspect that batteries, or there may be some evolution to using fuel cells, using green hydrogen at some point, which could also serve for longer distance trucks and buses to make things more efficient. But all of these are, are going to be required to be recycled. So I do think there is some, some sort of backend on that front, and that is certainly something we'll be mindful of. That, that has also been a concern sometimes with micro mobility, where they were not having batteries that were removable so that the whole, like scooter, for example, would have to be disposed of. And, and that's not something we want to see. So that, all of those technologies are continuing to evolve. So that is something that we will see going forward. It's certainly something to be mindful of. There's a question about school buses parking outside of schools. And so a question is, what is the cost for the electric buses? Well, what is, what is the cost for the electric school buses?
We do know that electric school buses are expensive, and a lot of the upfront costs for electric school buses are expensive. However, Intro 455 is a gradual transition to the, to electrifying the school bus fleet. And we, obviously, we would need funding from different places, from different sources. But we believe that the future cost outweighs the upfront cost of school buses now. Electric school buses have low, have lower maintenance costs. And once they're able to be mass-produced, obviously, the cost of, the cost of an electric school bus will be, will be reduced also. But we do understand that as of right now, because they are not being mass-produced, the, it is an expensive cost to produce an electric school bus. But we're hoping that, once the pilot program is implemented and people can see the efficiency and the benefits of having electric school buses on the streets, that there will be a ton of support for electrifying the fleet. And we will see those costs gradually decrease.
I think that's one hundred percent the case, we're going to see a lot more of that. Thank you guys very much, we are out of time for this little panel. So thank you, we have a lot to do in transportation, and we appreciate your time tonight. We are going to move on to our second panel. But again, thank you to Jenny, Danny, and Kate for your discussion tonight.
Bye, have a good night.
Thank you, everyone, bye.
Our next panel is on wastewater. Our next panel is on wastewater and green infrastructure. The importance of wastewater and green infrastructure in our city is often overlooked. The trees and plants on our streets and the natural buffers along our coastal waterways provide multiple environmental benefits, including cooling, air purification, and flood and storm surge protection. We also have, New York City's wastewater treatment plant digesters are currently an untapped resource as they produce renewable biogas that can be used to power the plants or offset the electric grid or used in transportation. It can also be updated, like the Newtown Creek Wastereachement Plant, to manage food scraps and help reduce waste going into the landfill. Green infrastructure like rain barrels and permeable pavements have the potential to improve resiliency and to save water. To discuss this further, let me begin tonight's panel. First up, please welcome Julie Welch. Julie is an ecological landscape design professional, who's worked with environmental stewards across New York City to plant street trees and advocate for clean waterways since 2011. In addition to working on a variety of ecological landscape projects in Vermont, Rhode Island, New York City, and Massachusetts since 2010, she has sought sustainable, taught sustainable systems classes and workshops throughout New York City and the Northeast. Has worked with the SWIM Coalition, Steering Committee, and member organizations since 2015 to empower waterway stakeholders and stewards across New York City with the tools and information they need to advocate for improved water quality in our local waterways. Julie, over to you.
Thank you, Julie. And thank you to the League for organizing and hosting this forum this evening. We appreciate it very much. And I'm excited to be here to talk with you all about wastewater and stormwater systems in New York City, how they impact our waterways, and some of the solutions that we're looking at to address green infrastructure and other options for lessening the burden on these two systems, which are indeed critical infrastructure in New York City. For those who are not familiar with SWIM Coalition, SWIM stands for Stormwater Infrastructure Matters, and we're a coalition of seventy organizations throughout the city who advocate for clean waterways through sustainable stormwater management solutions. So we have two systems, wastewater management and stormwater management in New York City that manage all of the wastewater from our homes and buildings, and the other systems that manage stormwater runoff from the city. I think we can skip to slide three, please. Oh, this is not the right presentation document, but I will try to work with it and go forward from there. So in New York City, seventy-two percent of our landmass is impervious, which means we don't have the capacity to absorb the amount of precipitation that we receive throughout the year in New York City. Due to that fact, the stormwater and wastewater systems become overwhelmed during wet weather, and they release pollutants into our waterways. And the slide that's up now talks about the fact that very often throughout the year, nearly twenty billion gallons of stormwater, polluted stormwater runoff and wastewater are discharged into our waterways, making them unsafe for public access and sometimes even unsafe to touch right after a wet weather event. If there's any way that you can get the right presentation document up, that would be great. But in the meantime, we have two systems in New York City that manage our stormwater runoff and wastewater. So if you can get to a slide that contains a map of the two systems, the combined sewer system and the, I think it's the next slide. There we go. And the separate stormwater system. I'll just give you a quick overview of these two systems, how they function, and then we'll move to some of the solutions that we think would be good to help lessen the burden on the two systems. The predominant system that manages wastewater and stormwater in New York is called the Combined Sewer System, and it's reflected in the gray hatched areas on the map. As you can see, they cover all of Manhattan, Queens, and Brooklyn and parts of the northern portion of Staten Island. In this system, all of the wastewater from our homes and buildings travels through the same set of pipes that all of the stormwater runoff from that section in the city travels. And so, under normal circumstances, the wastewater and the stormwater travel to one of fourteen sewer treatment plants and get treated before they are released into our waterways. During wet weather events, sometimes even as little as a tenth of an inch of rain, the system becomes overwhelmed, it is antiquated. It was installed, in some instances, the pipes are hundreds of years old. It becomes overwhelmed, and it has elements in place that allow it to divert and discharge untreated raw sewage and polluted stormwater directly into our waterways so that it doesn't go to a sewer treatment plant, overwhelm that plant, and cause backups into our homes and buildings. So the solution is for these waters to be discharged. That's what really creates the largest ongoing source of pollution in our waterways today, is this combined sewer system. It's an antiquated system, like many older coastal cities. This is what we have inherited and the system that we have to work with. And so we look to a whole array of solutions to help lessen the burden on it so that it can manage our water and sewer water. The pink areas on this map that you see along the edges of our boroughs and predominantly on Staten Island is a separate storm sewer system. So in this part of the city, stormwater doesn't run through the combined sewer system. It runs through a separate set of pipes, and they release untreated polluted stormwater into our waterways. So we've got these two sources of pollutants thirty to thirty-five times a year, discharging into our waterways, which makes them unsafe. It causes problems for the local ecology in these water bodies. And the city and the state are working together to remedy this matter through a series of plans and programs to shore up the combined sewer system and to install what we call green infrastructure throughout the city to manage stormwater where it falls so that it doesn't get into the system at all and thereby lessens the burden on it. So I think if we can move to, is there a map that shows CSO, CSO outfall points? Yes. So as the city and state have been putting together the plans to address this matter and lessen the burden on our antiquated system, SWIM Coalition and many of our members have worked with open source data to build out maps that help waterway stewards and stakeholders and elected officials and all of us understand exactly where these outfall points are along our shoreline, how many times they discharge this untreated sewage and stormwater into our waterways, and what the volume is, so that we can understand whether these plans that we're putting together are truly going to reduce the amount of pollution in our waterways. This is a map of the CSO outfall points that our member Riverkeeper produced, and they're organized by city council districts. So it might be helpful to look at them to see what's going on in your district, how many outfall points are in it, which water bodies do they discharge into, how often, and by how much volume. Again, we're drawing on open data source, so it is as accurate as we can make it. This map resides on a website organized by our member Riverkeeper called Cut the Crap NYC. And you can find it there and delve into your district. SWIM Coalition on our website also has a series of maps for each water body that is getting a CSO long-term control plan, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. So on our website, we have individual water body maps that show the outfalls for each water body and give you a sense of how much stormwater discharges into them, where we know that information, and how much CSO discharges into them. These are tools that we use to equip and inform waterway stewards and stakeholders throughout the city to help them advocate for the health of their waterways. And then the city, you can go to the next slide, please, is also mapping the outfalls for the separate storm sewer system that I mentioned earlier, which is along the edges of our city, as you can see. So that's additional outfall points on top of the CSO outfall points. This is just beginning to get mapped, the city has just taken over this system from the states, it's 2018. And so between the CSO maps and this MS, MS four outfall point map, we're starting to get a sense of just how much discharge volume our programs and plans and initiatives have to address and manage in order to reduce this twenty billion gallons of CSO pollution in our waterways. We say MS four a lot, that's an acronym that refers to the separate storm sewer system, which is four S's, hence the name MS four. So we have several plans underway or in the works. If you can go to, hopefully, the next slide, please, which are meant to address some of these concerns. There are eleven individual CSO long-term control plans and a green infrastructure plan that are working in tandem with one another in the combined sewer area of the city to help capture stormwater, as I said, where it falls so that it never goes into the system and thereby lessening the burden on the CSO combined sewer system. And then there is a stormwater management plan for the municipal separate storm sewer system. Right now, this third plan isn't quite on the same timeline as the combined, the LTCPs and the green infrastructure plan. And we would like to see it catch up with these so that they can become integrated elements, and we can look more holistically at what we're dealing with in the way of wastewater and stormwater discharging into our waterways and the green infrastructure that we're installing above ground to manage it. These are extremely expensive programs, and there's been quite an investment in them. If we can go to the next slide, please, I believe we'll see, these are some of our concerns. So the LTCPs, the investment is about $5.2 billion between the year 2012 and the year 2030, in which we will make this expenditure and this investment to improve and reduce the amount of CSO pollution in our waterways. We're worried about some of the aspects of these plans. They, at this time, do not consider sea level rise projections from our New York City Panel on Climate Change. They also are using and modeling on out-of-date rainfall data from 2008. While 2008 was a very wet year and represents, you know, what a, a large amount of rainfall looks like and how much needs to be measured. We know that the New York City Panel on Climate Change projections are indicating that we're going to have more frequent storms, more intense storms, and more precipitation in our region, and that is will increase by four to thirteen percent from now through the 2030s. So by the time these plans are complete, we may be looking at different rainfall scenarios than we're using in order to produce these plans right now. So the city is taking that under consideration, and we are in a very productive dialogue with them regarding the 2008 data to make sure that they're considering additional rainfall and what that might look like in these plans. Also, the plans are based on out-of-date water Also, the plans are based on out-of-date water quality assessment criteria, and that means that they're not measuring the amount of pollution in our waterways utilizing the most scientifically defensible criteria that they could. They have started to work with that new criteria and look at it against the plans, thanks to the advocacy of many of our members of SWIM Coalition. And the other concern we have right now is that in some cases, the city is proposing chlorination of CSO pollution rather than reduction of volume. And so we've been in dialogue with a great many members of the Department of Environmental Protection and at the state level to talk about the implications of chlorination. So there's a bit of a silver lining in that some of these programs are currently delayed because of budget constraints due to the pandemic, and that does give the city and state time to look for alternative solutions rather than chlorination. There have been many research papers published recently indicating that chlorination is certainly not good for the ecosystem within the waterways, but also that the emissions of it in the atmosphere in and around these waterways where chlorination would be used is suspect, to say the least. So let's see what the next slide has on here. The green infrastructure plan, as I noted, is also a very large investment. It is $1.6 million investment, and it has very inspiring and aspirational goals in which to men, green 8,000 acres of our impervious surface here in New York City. They're a little bit behind with the number of acres greened thus far under this program. We're at 1,230, and that's mostly in the public right of way. Nearly half of all the acres targeted for potential green infrastructure are on private property. So there have been many challenges, and the DEP has had an amazing adaptive management approach to the green infrastructure program and has done a good job in adjusting to the challenges on the ground and has worked to develop many more innovative designs that will work within the conditions that we have on the ground in New York City for the green infrastructure and the public right of way. It is a program that is a model that looks, that many, many cities throughout the U.S. look to, and we're, it's a very ambitious program. We look forward to the completion of it and to getting closer to some of the goals that have been set forth for the program. So with this, half of these 8,000 acres being on private property, we need to put together some incentive programs to make sure that private property owners are in a position to install green infrastructure on the and I think because I might be running tight on time, I'm just going to run quickly through some of the incentive programs. And I believe my colleague Emily Maxwell, who follows me, will speak to some of the sustainable rooftop laws that have come into place through the Climate Mobilization Act. But we have a green roof tax abatement. It gets renewed every four years. We have a working group right now that's informing some important changes to that program, which will incentivize property owners to utilize tax payment program and install green infrastructure. There's a green roof grant that DEP administers and a new one coming to the fore in 2021 that may be delayed because of budget constraints, but it's a new grant program to incentivize on large properties throughout New York City, the installation of green infrastructure, and the, those who do so will receive grant funds from the DEP. Some of the things that we need to do in order to really make these programs effective is get a full inventory of rooftops in New York City with the potential for vegetated systems, which Emily I think is going to speak to a little bit more. We need to get inventory of green infrastructure potential of the public and private property in each of the LTCP water body, watersheds, so that we can understand how much green infrastructure can actually be installed to support the long-term control plans. And then we need a database of each of the projects that get installed and some metrics by which to measure their success. And if we can go to the next slide, please. Then the next one. This is a quick snapshot of the CSO long-term control plans and the investment as well as their completion dates. Some of them are at 2030, which is where we have a whole set of goals established in terms of what we need to do in the way of reduction of CSO by 2030 so that we can make our waterways more accessible to all New Yorkers, make them safe to access for recreational, educational, cultural, and economic activities. SWIM Coalition focuses on the water bodies where they are already designated for recreational purposes like swimming and fishing, and so those water bodies get specific attention in order to, and make sure that they're safe for public access. And to the next slide, please. We can skip that and continue. Oh dear, let's see. Let's go to the end of the Okay, let's stay on 1618, go back one slide. Some of the legislation that we've worked at the Committee for Environmental Protection on calls for integrated planning, which I was mentioning earlier, to integrate the CSO long-term control plans with the MS four stormwater management plan so that we have a holistic plan for how to manage all the stormwater runoff in New York City and lessen the burden on our wastewater and stormwater systems. We're also in this legislation calling for quarterly stakeholder updates to an organized group of stakeholders by the DEP so that we don't just get one update per year at the end of the year after all the work is completed. We'd rather have the public weigh in and be informed on a quarterly basis and receive some reports that we can review and provide public comment on to the city and state. And then again, that note I made about the need for inventory on, of the potential for green infrastructure on private property in each, public and private property in each watershed. And then we can go to the next slide, which is an exciting development on the forefront of this year, and that is the 2021 Unified Stormwater Rule. This is the first time we really see an integrated approach to managing stormwater runoff in New York City. And it's a very exciting development, which the DEP will begin to speak about in public and I think offer some workshops so that the public can attend and learn more about this rule, which applies to parcels in the city that are either new development or getting retrofitted that are 20,000 square feet or larger, whereby they have to manage 1.5 inches of rainfall, both during construction and post-construction. Originally, this was a rule that applied only in the separate sewer system portion of the city. Now it applies citywide. So this is an interesting rule that's coming forward that we'll all need to learn more about and support. Right off the bat, advocates believe that when the plan, when the rule gets underway and starts to be applied, we should probably reduce the parcel size to make more parcels eligible for being, having to comply with this rule. Right now, we're going for large properties. So the stormwater rule is great. The city council just introduced another legislative bill, 962, which would limit the amount of impervious space on new development and horizontal retrofits, which we think is a great opportunity for that to align with this stormwater rule. Because 72% of our landmass is already impervious, we should probably stop making the rest of it impervious because the more we build, the more stormwater runoff we have, and the more it inundates our systems. So I appreciate your patience in hearing me out on this and for my trouble in following the, the presentation document. I apologize for that, and I'll look forward to talking about the green infrastructure solutions in our Q and A session and turn it over now to Emily Maxwell from the Nature Conservancy.
Thank you so much, Julie. We appreciate that. There's a lot of information there. As you mentioned, our next panelist is Emily Maxwell. Emily Noble Maxwell is the Director of the Nature Conservancy Cities Program in New York. Maxwell helped launch the Nature Conservancy's North America Cities Network and is a founding member of the New York City Urban Forest Task Force and Just Nature New York City. Emily is an author of Building Capacity Through Diversity, a report that explores building the efficacy of the environmental movement through diverse partnerships and of urban coastal resilience, valuing nature's role. She launched her urban environmental work, playing a critical role in community garden preservation in New York City, and has dedicated her career to urban environmental issues, equity, and justice. Emily currently serves on the Advisory Board for One NYC. Emily, over to you.
Thank you so much. It is terrific to be here with all of you tonight, and thank you to Julie and the League for such a wonderful event, and to my colleague Julie for her talk, and really to all of you, because it's wonderful to be in a Zoom room with so many people who are dedicated to our city's future. So next slide. So just briefly, the Nature Conservancy is a global conservation organization dedicated to conserving the lands and waters on which all life depends. Zooming into New York City, I'll just note, we have about 35,000 members, and we've had a program in New York City for about seven years. I'm thrilled to be here with all of you. And so next slide. So Julie gave us a terrific overview of the laws that compel action to manage stormwater by New York City and some of the myriad issues that New York City faces. I want to give you just a snapshot of what green infrastructure looks like, because I think that we all sort of sometimes have to bring this to the ground. There are many types of green infrastructure as defined by the city, and some of that we see as we walk down the street, rain gardens, green streets, some of it's on our rooftops, green roofs, blue roofs. And if we come to the next slide. We also can observe that there are things that don't look as green, but they function to absorb stormwater, permeable pavers, subsurface detention, cisterns, rain barrels, and then of course infiltration basins, which can look more green. So what I want to do is I want to give you an overview of sort of vegetation in the city. I want you to understand the big picture, and then we're going to drill into two specific types of green or nature-based infrastructure, and we're going to take a deep dive there. And if I had more time, we could go into more of them, but these will be sort of what we cover tonight. So if we come to the next slide, I want to give you a picture of the fact that if we look at New York City as a whole, there's a lot of vegetation, but there's more vegetation in some areas and there's less in other areas. So where it's darker green, you have more vegetation, and vegetation matters not only for stormwater, but it also provides, as Julie indicated, myriad services, including very importantly, heat reduction and heat mitigation. And New York City is currently experiencing more and more intense heat waves and is projected under climate science. The MPCC, the New York Panel on Climate Change, tells us that we will experience more and hotter heat waves as time goes. And so if we can come to the next slide, I want to take a look at temperature. And where you have the darker purple, you have cooler temperatures. And if we can switch back and forth between these two slides, I want you all just to take in that where we have more vegetation on a hot summer day, we have cooler temperatures. And I realize it's sort of a lot of visual information to process, but if you look up into the North Bronx, you can notice it. And if you look down at JFK, you can really see these correlations quite strongly. So we can carry on to the next slides. But so it's not only the view of the whole city that we can look at when we think about nature and green infrastructure. We can also think about individual blocks, and I encourage you all to just put yourself into a hot summer day and think about what this street looks like, or think about, you know, a day that we have an extreme rain event and flooding, what's happening on this street versus what's happening on the next street we're going to show you. We go to the next slide. These are really different systems, and it feels a lot better to walk down a street that looks like this than then looks like the prior one that we saw. And this is, I think, what we want to see the constituents and residents of New York City experiencing. So next slide, please. So you've seen the big picture. I wanted to dive into two key assets. One is green roofs, and then we're going to take a look at our urban forest. So rooftops in New York City truly are an untapped asset. Next slide, please. We have across New York City about a million buildings, which their total acreage of their rooftops comprises about 40,000 acres. And to put that in plain language, that's about a whole other borough. So it's a tremendous amount of land. Not all of it is possible to utilize for green roofs, but a lot of it actually might be. And the Nature Conservancy took a hard look because we wanted to understand where are roofs being green? And so we can take, go to the next slide. Oh, and before I tell you that, let me tell you that roofs do provide us an array of benefits from energy savings to cooling our air, to providing additional outdoor space, and even improving the lifespan of roofs. So let's, let's take a, go to our next slide. So when we took a look at our, at rooftops in New York City, remember, we have a million buildings about, when we took a look at 2016 data that looks at land cover, we were able to identify only about 736 green roofs. This matters tremendously. It says, hey, this is an area of huge opportunity. It also tells us about equity issues, and we know that many of these roofs are in midtown and downtown Manhattan and primarily on certain building types. Next slide, please. So when we look at this, first of all, less than 0.1% of all of New York City's rooftops have a green roof, so we know they can be working much harder for us. And we see that those rooftops we do have are clustered all in one area, and they're not making it out into all of the communities that many of you are looking to serve, which is critical. Next slide, please. Specifically, I want to drill in for a moment to heat vulnerability. Where you see the darkest red on the right side, those are our most heat vulnerable neighborhoods per the city's own heat vulnerability index. Where you see the most green on the left, it means we have the highest density of green roofs. And we can see clearly that in our hottest, most heat vulnerable community, or I say our most heat vulnerable communities, not our hottest communities, excuse me, we have the lower numbers of green roofs, which is tremendously important, and we need to be working to actually, you know, socialize this, this technology, us all of these, particularly those that are most vulnerable. Next slide, please. So to that end, there are a couple of exciting new policies on the books and some real opportunities to continue to improve them through local laws, 92 and 94, which were part of the climate mobilization sort of package of laws that were put together. There are now green roof or solar or wind even mandated for retrofits and new construction. There is now actually requirements for the city to share more green roof information. And also there is a recently renewed tax abatement that has been increased in some ways and has been renewed, and it's currently undergoing the rulemaking process in the city to be distributed. Next slide, please. So we do have some recommendations, and that is, we want to ensure that we have sufficient incentives. We want to institutionalize green roof tracking, and we want to ensure that all of our buildings, especially municipal buildings and schools with large flat roofs that serves kids, do benefit from green roofs directly. So let's carry on to the urban forests now. We're going to come down to the ground. We can go to the next slide. And great, thank you. So across New York City, we have more than seven million trees, more than 650,000 grace our streets, and about 22% of our land is covered by tree canopy. Trees aren't defined specifically as green infrastructure, but they are critical natural infrastructure. Next slide. They provide us so many services that we can quantify and many that we also can't. If we had to replace our trees once, it would cost us almost $6 billion, and they provide us on average about $100 million worth of services per year or more. These estimates are underestimated, so I'm just giving you a peek of what they can do for us. Next slide, please. We do know, this is the good news, that from 2010 to 2017, we've seen increases in our tree canopy, which is the cover, the sort of shade that they provide. But we also see that some boroughs are still lagging behind and haven't had as much. So we know that there's an equity issue in our canopy, and we know we need more overall. Next slide, please. If we drill down into the finer scale, this is by census tract, we see that where you have red on the right-hand side, that you've been experiencing loss. So I want to say that as you're looking out to the districts you're considering representing, it's not equal everywhere, and this is tremendously important. Next slide. Here again, we can observe that oftentimes where we have the most heat vulnerable neighborhoods, we have less tree canopy. Next slide, please. And trees face tremendous challenges. They don't have a powerful advocate body. They have They have insufficient funding for both planting and maintenance. There's disparate management and inequitable distribution. They don't have sufficient laws and policies protecting them or incentivizing landowners to plant them. And they face environmental challenges, climate, pests, and pathogens. Next slide, please. So to that end, I just want to share a couple of exciting developments. The Nature Conservancy, with 50 other organizations, has recently convened a New York City Urban Forest Task Force. Please stay tuned, in May, around May, we'll be releasing an urban forest agenda, and we hope you all will take a hard look at it. It's a set of 12 actions that can advance investments in and the care of our urban forests for the sake of more resilient and sustainable communities. Next slide. I also encourage you to take a look at Just Nature NYC, which is our partnership with New York City Environmental Justice Alliance that advocates more nature-based solutions across New York City to support climate justice and equity. Next slide. We have a few just concrete recommendations I want to leave you with. This really is about ensuring the right rules and incentives to promote justice, equity, expansion, and better distribution of green roofs, our urban forests, and green infrastructure more broadly. There are opportunities to preserve and increase funds for urban forestry, both capital and operational. We recommend taking a hard look to consider expanding and advancing the Cool Neighborhoods Program, which invests in heat vulnerable communities. And we also want to encourage always to play fair for parks and into a robust funding for parks and green jobs for New Yorkers. Next slide. So with that, I just want to thank you profusely for your time. I'm excited for your questions, and please don't hesitate to reach out to me anytime I can be helpful. Thank you.
Emily, thank you very much. We have one more panelist, Lisa Bloodgood. A North Brooklyn neighbor, resident since 2006, Lisa Bloodgood is currently the Director of Advocacy and Education with the Newtown Creek Alliance, where she's focused on innovation, innovative restoration efforts, the intersection of urban ecology and industry, and expanding opportunities for environmental education in North Brooklyn and Western Queens. Through her work with the Newtown Creek Alliance, Lisa helped to manage and program Kingsland Wildflowers at Broadway Stages, which is the largest green roof in New York City, regularly open to the public, and is working collaboratively with water advocacy groups throughout the Harbor Estuary and across the city to develop strategies for expanding the local green economy to include well-paid careers in green infrastructure and water resource management, in developing equitable access to all of New York City's 520 miles of shoreline, and in restoring as much of the ecological splendor that once flourished in and around our waters. Lisa is most interested in ways New York City can transform its economy into one that centers human and ecological health and well-being at its core. Lisa.
Hi, and good evening, everyone. I would like to begin by acknowledging and thanking all of you, candidates and staff. Your dedication and service, or your dedication to public service, excuse me, and the greater good of our city is vital to the functioning of our very society. I know firsthand, it isn't easy work either. So I worked for city council for a number of years. And you are special, even among public servants. You have the equally daunting and exciting opportunity to transform our city as we pull out of the nightmare that has been the pandemic and a federal administration that has not supported us. You will also have an opportunity and obligation to take the national focus on racial inequity and injustice that was made so crystal clear this past year, and fundamentally change the way we operate and what we value. I firmly believe that if we center racial and economic, or excuse me, racial and environmental justice with inclusivity and equity in how we shape the future of the city, our recovery and transformation will be profound and enduring. So thank you to the League of Conservation Voters for hosting the series and panel, and thank you Julie and Emily, my incredible colleagues, for joining this particular session on green infrastructure. But, and thank you again for allowing me to join with my voice with so many other New Yorkers and sharing our expertise and knowledge with all of you. The work in the coming years is very important. So I can't wait to work with you to achieve our goals. So I'm Lisa Bloodgood. I'm one of thousands of New Yorkers who work every day to ensure that our shared waters have advocates and that we are protecting and restoring the ecosystems that once flourished here, and also preparing for the floodwaters that we know will come. But also critically, that the people that work and live here have healthy relationships with our waterways, and that each and every New Yorker knows that these waters impact their daily lives, and that they in turn have a deep impact on those same waters. So I work for a very small nonprofit, Newtown Creek Alliance. We are in North Brooklyn and Western Queens, and our work is steeped in environmental justice. Many of our communities are contaminated by the legacy of industrialization, and much of what I want to talk about is reflected in these communities. When, and if and when you are elected, or if you are not, I'd love to have you come visit our corner of the city and estuary, and we can show you firsthand some of what we've put in these slides, but also so much more. So, next slide, please. It was really very difficult to decide what to share with you today. I mean, what are the impacts of green infrastructure on our communities, and in particular, our environmental justice communities? So not only what those impacts are, but what they also could be. And so I'm going to share a series of maps and images to tell that story. And I want to thank and also apologize to Emily in advance. We do have some of the same maps, because I'm a big fan of the Nature Conservancy. And so, again, to those listening, when you are in office, definitely listen to Emily and Julie. They have a lot to share. So I'm going to cover not only these impacts, the benefits, and yes, there are just benefits from green infrastructure, public access to our shared waters, some suggestions on other ways to prioritize green infrastructure. And last, I'm going to try, if I have enough time, to talk about wastewater treatment, or is it waste resource recovery? That's kind of the question right now, and the promise, burden, and also compromise for housing those things in our communities. Next slide. So as we know, and I've circled Newtown Creek right here, so you know what I'm talking about, and where we're located, right in the very center of New York City. But the problem is our built environment. All of our surfaces, or most of our surfaces, excuse me, are paved or otherwise covered. And this doesn't just mean we have lots of buildings and roads. It also means that we have poor water quality, poor air quality, extreme heat, and the vulnerabilities associated with that, and little or no room for ecosystems that we are not separated from, and little or no access to nature, which we cannot live without. So, next slide. This is just a very brief overview of CSO that Julie actually went more into detail with. But I wanted to show this image, because this is what we have to deal with in our small tributary. We are four miles long, and we receive a staggering 1.2 billions of gallons. And that's billions with a B, every year from 22 outfalls, but really, it's just four main big offenders, these discharge points. Excuse me, one second. And so these images show, on the top, this is a CSO discharging. On the lower left, this is an algae bloom that is caused by a CSO discharge. And on the right is the plastics and other litter that end up not only in our waterways, but in the oceans that plague marine life, and end up actually ultimately entering the food chain. Next slide. And so, if it hasn't already been said, in New York City, green infrastructure describes an array of practices that use or mimic natural systems to manage stormwater runoff. Not all of the other things someone might think of when they hear green infrastructure. This is a point of clarification I have to make all the time, especially when people are talking about Green New Deal and green infrastructure. They think of transportation and so many other things. But in New York City, this is what we are talking about. And I'm going to focus on just two main types, curbside rain gardens or the right-of-way rain gardens, and green roofs. And it's kind of remarkable that 30% of our city is covered with these impervious right-of-way surfaces. Next slide. So, as of 2016, and thank you again to the Nature Conservancy for your work to produce this, these statistics, and some of the maps I'm about to show you. But as of 2016, as Emily mentioned, there were 736 green roofs in public and private buildings. And this is the green roof that I was talking about earlier, that, or actually, that Julie mentioned when introducing me, that is a very, it's 25,000 square feet of green roof that is open to the public. We do lots of programming there. Unfortunately, we've been closed during COVID. Yeah, so this is one green roof. Oh my goodness, I have five minutes left, so I'm going to just skip through. So the next slide shows the distribution of green roofs that we already saw from Emily. And what is really remarkable is that incredible concentration in midtown and Manhattan, downtown, and even a little bit onto the Brooklyn and Western Queens waterfronts. And I will not get into local law 94, the Department of Environmental Protections Grant Program, or the green roof tax abatements, because they were already covered. So, next slide. So this is a map that I think is also very telling. This is the current green infrastructure plan. It was launched in 2010. It's designed to manage one inch of rainfall on 10% of the city's impervious surfaces by 2030, which is the equivalent of just under 8,000 acres. Unfortunately, we've only been able to achieve about 1,200 of those to date, and that is 15 and a half percent of the total that we're trying to get to. So with 10 years under our belt and 10 years to go, we have much to do. Next slide. So now we're looking at a similar map, showing all the construction right-of-way gardens, but in the context of the state's DEC, potential environmental justice areas. And these areas are defined, well, you can see them in red, and they're defined as 51.1% of the population reporting themselves to be members of a minority group, or at least 23.59% of the population have household incomes below the federal poverty line. And so, these environmental justice areas, and some of the next images that I'm going to show you, it's really very clear that just being in these neighborhoods mean there are implications for living in these communities. And we know that it is low-income families and communities of color that suffer disproportionately from air pollution, exposure to toxins, and a lack of green space. So, next slide. And so, here we go. This is where we begin, where I showed more maps that Emily already showed you. But I love these two side by side, because you really get to see that difference in where our vegetated areas are, and where our heat vulnerabilities also lie. And if you remember that red circle earlier where Newtown Creek is, there is an awful lot of heat vulnerability and lack of vegetative cover and very hot temperatures that we see all around the creek. But they're also kind of, almost straight down the middle, you can see we're missing vegetative covers, and we've got very hot, hot summer days. So, next slide. And so, this is the green roof map and the heat vulnerability map. And I'll just go to the next slide, because it's also showing that same thing, where you don't have green roofs, and where you don't have tree canopy, you are seeing real heat vulnerabilities. And as mentioned, our temperatures are getting hotter, and we really don't have a cooling center system set up. And so, the point is, is that at the very center of our right-of-way rain gardens is a tree. And so if we are expanding our green infrastructure system throughout our priority watersheds, and you can go to the next slide. Well, that's not the one I thought it was going to be. Anyways, well, I'll just talk a little bit about the value of tree. The statistics here are taken from the Parks Department Street Tree Map. Fantastic and interactive tool. I want to just take a minute to have you think about the value of a tree. Trees are intercepting stormwater, they're conserving energy, they're removing air pollutants, and they are reducing carbon dioxide every day for free. And as was mentioned earlier, that is an enormous investment if we were to have to plant them now. But if we were to make an investment to expand our green infrastructure, we would also have more trees, excuse me, sorry. Next slide. So in addition to those extreme heat vulnerabilities, the lack of green infrastructure can cause, they're really very real health problems that people suffer from. And so now, these maps, which are not Nature Conservancy maps, show, there are Department of Health maps that they're showing asthma-related emergency room visits. And you see them, they're in the same areas where we're seeing that heat vulnerability. In those same areas where we're seeing a lack of greenery, we see asthma visits, or, excuse me, emergency room visits due to asthma, childhood and adult. And the adult ones are clearly attributed to particulate matter that is small enough to pass through into your lungs, into your blood system, and they cause many other health problems, not just asthma, cardiovascular disease, dementia, stroke, and more. So there's a real pattern here that we're seeing. So, next slide. And we saw this play out in the most devastating way this past year, where death rates and death counts were far too high in many of these same environmental justice communities. So if we are to focus our attention and resources on helping the Department of Environmental Protection, the DEP, the agency tasked with the rollout of the green infrastructure program, to get to that 10%, that's the goal early. And we had a network of community organizations like Newtown Creek Alliance, and we had support for community stewardship programs and youth-led greening initiatives in these areas. To care for these investments, we would see these statistics start to change. We would see healthier communities, cleaner air, and cleaner water. So this is a hard topic and a hard slide to move on from, because there's so much here. But I do want to cover some of those other topics. So, the next slide. I want to talk about public access. And so, this is a very typical shoreline that is not a part of those 161 miles waterfront parks and 14 miles of beaches. We have 345 miles of inaccessible waterfront. And so on Newtown Creek, there are 11 miles of shoreline. I think we have, you know, maybe half an acre that's accessible in that whole area. And we have identified almost two dozen opportunities to create access points on the water. And so, if you were to go into any waterfront community anywhere in the city, and you ask that community, where can you see an access point? They'll show you. So how do we develop new waterfront opportunities for New Yorkers when currently the only way to get a park is through a rezoning, or a change of land use? Or if you're lucky to live on the west side, and you get a crazy new island, which is beautiful, but also, you know, can we get one of those in Canarsie perhaps? So this is a question that all waterfront advocates are working together to find ways to provide that equitable access. And so, that is something that we're looking forward to working with all of you on, finding new opportunities and solutions. So, next slide. And so now, this is about the Uniform Land Use Review Process, and the SEACR element of it, which is basically the environmental impacts assessment and statements that are required through that Uniform Land Use Review Process, the U-LER process. And so, so many advocates, so many groups that are not just water advocates, would love to see SEACR reform. There's a lot of different reasons why it needs to be revamped and refreshed so that that process doesn't take into account the real impacts development has on a community. And those impacts also, excuse me, I'm so easily distracted, I have one minute left. So CSOs are a big problem when you're thinking about new development. So you're adding all those new flushing toilets, all of those showers and laundry and all of that. And if we're not And if we're not even able to handle the CSOs that we have now, how are we going to have any new developments that aren't going to continue to contribute to that problem? So that 2012 stormwater rule that mandates stormwater is managed on-site is great, but we need to see more. And the next slide gets a little bit into that nitty-gritty. And so, you know, take a screen grab or, or watch this again so you can really get into what those strategies look like when you are trying to get to net no new CSOs on new development. And this was developed by our partners at the Gowanus Canal Conservancy, and so I thank them for their leading the charge. And they are faced with a rezoning that will contribute more CSOs to the, hopefully freshly cleaned Gowanus Canal post-superfund remediation, but we can't get there. We, we can't add new CSOs to to this waterway. So the next slide. And this is where I'm going to stop because I want to just take a minute to talk about the wastewater treatment process and those facilities that, there are 14 of these wastewater treatment plants citywide. This is the Newtown Creek facility. You can see the green roofs there at the Kingsland Wildflower Building. This is where we have our offices and where I invite you to come and visit us sometime. So this Newtown Creek wastewater treatment facility has been rebranded, the Newtown Creek Resource Recovery Facility. And I think that is, it's a wonderful promise, right? The resource recovery. And Julie mentioned it, or excuse me, Emily mentioned it earlier. No, Julie did mention it earlier, where we can manage our food scraps and we can produce a renewable methane. But there are a lot of problems with that, and that program is not up and running as it should be. And that has big implications on what we're, how we're going to approach the renewable Rikers, which exciting news happened today on that very point. But I'll also just say, in each one of these communities that is home to a wastewater treatment plant or potentially the resource recovery facility of the future, these are often overburdened communities, and this picture is a great example of that. You see there is all kinds of heavy infrastructure, and it's an industrial area. And the community is a block away, and we feel it, we smell it, and it's very, very important that these communities are compensated for that. And so I will end there. I'm sorry for going a little over time, but thank you so much. And oh, the next slide is just to thank you, and it's my contact information if you have any questions or you want to pursue that visit. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lisa. That does conclude our presentation for our second panel. We will have another poll right now. If you have any questions, please do pop them in the Q and A. But if we can run the poll right now, it's only one question, unlike last, the earlier one, which was three. We do have a few questions before we wrap. One is, has the city mandated any part of the green infrastructure for new development? So obviously, Lisa, you were just talking about that. Who wants to take a first crack at this?
Can you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Has the city mandated any part of the green infrastructure for new development? And this?
No.
Well, green roofs are required, right? Green roofs or?
Well, okay, yes. So, yes, so the
Sustainable, yeah, the sustainable roof laws allow for vegetated systems, which would be a green roof. But they also, you can opt to do wind or solar. So it's not a mandate per se that they be vegetated.
So this seems like it's an opportunity, and you talked about this earlier, about the need for incentives to try and private development to do that as, as they're doing building. And also, I think the opportunity to look at under SEACR or other mechanisms, because if the state touching SEACR is like the third rail. I don't know if in the city it's as much, but certainly there's an opportunity for requiring some kind of management so that you aren't at zero. There are certainly developers that are looking at that now and trying to find ways to do that. I know of at least one project in Brooklyn that's proposed that would be managing all of that for that very purpose. So certainly there's opportunities on that front. I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything on that before I move on to some other questions.
I'll just briefly share, and we're happy to circulate the link that regarding the sustainable roof laws, which were framed broadly, as my colleagues have indicated, working together with Urban Green Council, we released a primer on those laws because they are candidly a bit complicated to read. So there's a link now in the chat for you all who might want to learn a bit more about those laws as written.
Great. Thank you. How can a potential bond act pave the way for investments in green infrastructure in environmental justice communities? And what other funding streams can be tapped into to help with green infrastructure?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. So the Bond Act is one, but there's also, oh geez, it just left my head. It's the Environmental Protection. What?
The State Environmental Protection Fund?
Yes, thank you, thank you. I did have it right. So the State Environmental Protection Fund is available, and also there is inequity in how that fund is spent in New York City. Where, for example, Brooklyn has spent a lot more money through that fund than Queens has. But that, that is another fund that can be tapped to potentially expand some green infrastructure programs.
And if I, if I may just jump in on the, the Bond Act, because the Nature Conservancy, I can say, is, you know, generally in favor of things that will provide us more funding for, you know, good green things that support communities. There's a few attributes that I'll, that I'll note, and knowing that we don't know if it will come back as a real opportunity or not. When it was originally developed, there's a number of very important funding streams in it, you know, for land conservation, for clean energy. There was some specific language put in regarding specifically a very significant chunk of money for urban forestry, much of which would come to New York City, about 50% of that fund, which is, I think about 75 million would have come. There was some great language regarding funding for green infrastructure and green roof. So I would certainly encourage folks to keep your eye on that and to try to encourage, you know, movement on that as possible. And then of course, you know, with the new federal administration, which I won't comment on heavily, I think there's more cause for optimism about federal funding streams, which we should all be keeping our eyes on as well.
Absolutely. And I want to just say one thing that right now, the DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection, the way they pay for all of this work, maybe not all of it, because there is capital investments as well that come from other sources, but it's through our water rates. And so we pay, every time we pay a water bill, we are paying for, for CSOs. We are kind of facilitating their continuation. And so if, this isn't a legislative thing, but it is an advocacy thing that can take place amongst council members and other elected officials where we can restructure our water rates. So say, property owners with large parking lots should be paying for all of that stormwater runoff. That should not fall on the backs of, you know, the homeowner who's taking a couple of showers and producing significantly less wastewater than that parking lot. So I think looking at water rates and the restructuring is also a great tool.
Yes, and the DEP is conducting a study right now that will have a broad array of public input. They're organizing a Citizens Advisory Committee for that study over the next few years. And I encourage everyone to get involved and provide their input on that study so that we have an equitable restructuring of the rate.
And I will just mention, because we actually didn't, we didn't go into detail on this, but, but the state proposed a $3 billion environmental bond act for the first time since 1996, in, as part of the budget last year. It was not advanced to the ballot because of the state's financial position, because of COVID, like so many things. It is something that is being actively considered again this year. The governor didn't propose it, but we understand that some in legislature are looking at it, and we expect if it's not on the ballot in 2021, it would be something on the ballot in 2022. And that would require more explicitly that at least 40% of the funds would be spent in environmental justice or disadvantaged communities across the state. That is all we have time for tonight. I want to thank Lisa, Emily, and Julie for speaking on this panel. If you would like to hear the discussion again, we will be posting this on YouTube, which is youtube.com/nylcv. We hope to see you at our next panel, which is next Thursday, February 18th at 5:30, where we will be discussing parks and public health. There should be an RSVP in the chat. As always, we hope you follow us on, at @nylcv on Twitter, on Facebook, and Instagram for updates. And we encourage you to sign up for our email list at www.nylcvef.org. And thank you all so much. I hope you have a safe and healthy President's Weekend. I myself will be doing some snowshoeing upstate, so I'm very much looking forward to that. Great. Thank you all.